I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you for your patience while we're getting started a little bit late today. There are no beforeable actions without a closed session. And so we will just begin with our one item tonight, person discussion on the fiscal recovery stabilization plan. And I will hand it over to Superintendent.
So I need the microphone. Just so I don't, I don't want to. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Is that good? Will you adjust for background?
Actually, I just noticed that public comment on agenda items listed before, but I'm going to adjust the agenda because we'll do it the normal way, which is there'll be a staff report and then public comment and then the board discussion. So I'm going to make adjustments to the agenda moving C2 to within anyone after the staff report.
That was weird. Did you guys hear that other noise? It's just me. Okay. So, thank you for being here tonight. And we are going to get started with the discussion portion of this item. What I'd like to start with is a reminder about the Budget Advisory Committee. And first off, to thank them again for their service to the district by attending and participating in, I think they did a seven meetings, six or seven meetings so far, with more to come. And I see Mr. Gossby here. Any other representation by Mr. Gossby without the BAC, Budget Advisory? So stand up and thank this man, as well, as well as the other members of the Budget Advisory Committee. Just as a reminder, it was an ad hoc committee charged with development recommendations. This committee was put into place by the Port of Education. I want to, I've actually got the letter or the budget advisory committee purpose and parameters, and I just want to review them before we get started because again, the work that they did was tremendous and the recommendations they brought forward to me was a lot of work. The BAC was charged with looking at staff recommendations and in fact asked staff to bring forward recommendations for budget solutions. Departments were within the district, looked at some of these possible solutions to be brought forward for the BAC to take a look at. They reviewed all aspects of our budgets from apportions to expenditures, particularly for the 18-19 budget development. They knew that non-negotiable items was just, was something that had to be taken care of with the bargaining units. They've generated ideas around savings, around shared services and alternative revenues. And they asked for the district to cooperate with assisting in any kind of information they might need in order to make their decisions. The committee then, through this process, came up with recommendations for me, and the board heard the first go at it at the last board meeting. And so, at the last meeting, it was then, we took a look at some other items, some other things, we met with some people, various people, we met with SRTA, we met with home and hospital teachers. We just took into consideration the feedback that we got at the town hall meeting, as well as the last board meeting. We looked and we looked and we looked at the possible solutions that we have. And so now what I'd like to do, sorry, I have a little bit of a sore throat, I'm going to go over a couple of the main things that we heard through this process of public hearing and town hall. And I'm going to ask that staff, Assistant Superintendent Jason Lee, Assistant Superintendent Steve Mizra, Assistant Superintendent Anna Guzman, will be speaking to some specific items on the list. So what I have and I'm going to be looking at is the possible budget solutions dated February 21st, 2018. It is online. I hope we can bring it up here to help people out, but that might be something we can do. Because it's right in the agenda items. And the first one I'm going to go to, that we heard a lot about, and that is item number six. So Assistant Superintendent Lee, would you give us a little background on item number six?
So, item number six deals with the recommendations and information around the student-to-teacher ratios. I know there's been some concerns around the information we've received from School Services of California. There's a financial organization that provides financial information and guidance to districts across the state. I know that when you look at their, the information they provided, and they looked at our enrollment and divided it by our FTE, full-time equipment and classroom teachers, is how they came up with the ratio that we are at 20.8, 20.81 to 1. And so I know there's been some concerns around that because of the fact that people look in their classrooms and say, I know I don't have 20 kids in my classroom, I have more. But that's an actual equivalency that's been used and provided to the district since about 2014. It's an oversimplification on some level, meaning they take enrollment at each of those levels and divide it by the total number of teachers at each of those levels to get that number. But when we went to School Services back in 2014 and said, hey, we want to get back into the benefits game, how do we improve our total compensation? They provide us the same information, that compared to other districts using the same criteria, even some of the ones in our own county, we have a, we have more staff than others in comparison. So that is a way for us to, to save some money and get back into the benefits as they provided us that information in 2014. And again, more recently, using the 16-17 data, saying again, if you were going to save some money, an area would be to increase your student-to-teacher ratio by one student. And I know that you can't say that without saying that's not going to have impact on class sizes. That's the reality, it will have impact on class sizes and it will have impact on enrollment. We looked at information last year, kind of through a different lens on, but really getting to the same issue of how do we be fiscally responsible? How do we have student-driven master schedules built to serve the students we have? And really be, how do we be more fiscally responsible in our staffing? I had, we had board members request to look at, really what are the averages right now at our middle schools and high schools, taking out special education? Because obviously we know special education classes are staffed at lower numbers, as they should be. At the middle school level, we're looking at 27 students to 1, and at the secondary high school level, we're looking at 25 to 1. And again, people say, why is that? How can that be? And I know in core subject areas, we see teachers that are at their contractual limit, 165 students, which isn't, even that itself isn't ideal if you're an English teacher with 165 students. But we have other courses that aren't full. I mean, I don't know how else to say that, and we have to start looking at what we offer and what are we making commitments to for our kids at the same time being fiscally responsible and moving the district into a situation where we have a positive recommendation of the county, certification from the county.
Okay, the next area that I'm going to speak about is item number 10. Restorative specialists, 11-month employees. So Assistant Superintendent Mizra and Guzman came to me about this particular area, which would be to reduce the restorative practice, restorative specialists from an 11-month to a 10-month contract. And what they shared with me was that due to the fires, we're going to run an extensive summer school, a more extensive summer school this summer, more offerings, more classes, more schools. So, we thought, they thought, why don't we go ahead for one year, utilize the restorative specialists in that summer school offering, because it's going to be greater, and see how that goes. And so that is a recommendation that I like, I think it makes sense, especially due to what's happened, and would be one that I would recommend to the board. Okay? So that's number 10. The next one I'm going to go to is number 16. Number 16, you can see on the, on this sheet, I think behind me, that it's already been struck. And that is because we met with President Lyon and Chief Negotiator Howell, as well as teachers from home and hospital. And we talked about how is it that we could best utilize their time if they were not completely being used for home and hospital? Please know that, and I'm probably saying some things that you guys are going to say, but I'll say them anyway, was that we were never intending to cut home and hospital because we do have to provide those services, as was mentioned in the last presentation. So, yeah, we were never going to not offer and have home and hospital. It was going to be a reduction, but if we are able to utilize that space, that gap in the FTE that meets home and hospital, we're doing some, something such as short-term, site-based independent study, that's a win-win. That's a good thing for kids, it's a good thing for our home and hospital teachers. And everyone felt that was a good idea in terms of the home and hospital teachers, as well as President Lyon and Chief Negotiator Howell. And so as you can see, number 16 has been struck. Next are 17 and 18, where there were some questions around the prep teachers. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Guzman to speak to, and I'll ask to Dr., Assistant Superintendent Mizra, if you had anything to add to the restorative. Are you good with what I said there? Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we are appreciating that coordinated work that we're doing with SRTA right now, to really establish a school-site-based model and not wanting to move to the home. Because there's, one of the advantages in that model is any more services they can be at the school site to provide for those students, like counseling, like SSTs and all those things, and I think that'd be much more supportive and ultimately bring students back to their normal school setting much better.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Dantos and Mr. Bell, if you could recalculate that number for me and show it, give it to me so we know at the end? Okay. Okay, Dr. Guzman, back to you on the elementary prep teachers.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I can't hear myself. So, as you know, we are currently 2.5 over an FTE and liberal prep specialist. Also, a lot of the internal music at the sites is being offered after school, which sort of takes away from the purpose of the prep specialist, which is to offer prep to prep to teachers during the school day. And so, this defeats the purpose, and therefore that actually adds up to almost a 1.0 for those music teachers that are actually teaching after school. So that by incorporating those music stuff back into the day, we really are going to be able to offer a more comprehensive, equitable music program, and also be a little more for what we need for prep for our teachers.
Okay, thank you. Those were the major items that I received quite a bit of feedback and wanted to take a look at again before I made my recommendations to you as a board. And so at that, at this time, Joel, do you have that number?
So that's moving item, the...
Forty-five thousand, right?
Okay. Yeah. So there's 45 home and hospital?
Home and hospital is already calculated.
And the, and the reduced, and the 11-month, 10-month?
Right, the 45,000.
So that was the supplemental consideration that, so if we do that, then, by the social values?
Would stay the same. Okay, so, the switch from an 11-month to a 10-month contract, contract for restorative, was really affecting supplemental funds in the LCAP, not the general fund. So the general fund amount, dollar amount, still stays at 7.17 million, you can see here. But knowing that it does relieve some of the things that we need, we're going to be doing in our LCAP funding, so. Okay? So, I turn it over to the board in terms of, these are the recommendations that I'm making at this time for the budget solutions for 18-19.
Thank you. So, I have two blue cards, and then there's one thing that I've been getting a lot of questions about and feedback about that I wanted to address, because I forgot to ask Superintendent too. And that is about attracting out of district students to our district. That seems, there seems to be a misconception that that, that those students just bring dollars with them, and that that's just a net gain, and that, they, they might, but they require resources, just like any kid. So it's not about bringing extra students or not losing extra students, it's about maintaining efficient ratios and, you know, efficiently using our resources. Extra students can come in and throw that off balance and actually cost us money, or vice versa. So that's something that, it's a misconception that I wanted to correct. And with that, I will go to President Lyon. And after that, Tony Dantos.
Hello, hello? Hello, hello? All right. Superintendent Kinnoro, President Close, and members of the board, I'm going Lyon. President, San Jose Teachers Association, you have a difficult job to do tonight. I thank you in advance for your service, even if I disagree with your final decision. I want to thank Lieutenant Kinnoro for removing home and hospital from the list, that was the right thing to do. I'm still concerned with the four prep specialists. Our math shows that we need to cut two instead of four. Or, we need to cut 24 elementary teachers, or some combination of the two, in order to be in our contractual requirements to provide two hours of prep time for all of our elementary classroom teachers. I hope you will trim that back to two tonight, or perhaps it'll be one. I had not heard what Ms. Guzman said about music, and I don't understand what that means. But I hope that you will trim it back so that we can avoid the hassles and the hurt feelings of correcting this in the grievance process. My biggest concern with the list of solutions is the justification for cutting 27 classroom teachers is a 20 to 1 student-to-teacher ratio. I'm confident that that number's wrong. However they arrived at that number, it's apples to oranges at best, it's misleading at worst. I have put on the table before the meeting started, last year's fiscal year, proposed solutions for fiscal year 17-18, which this board adopted. Notice solution 10, it begins, quote, "The district currently allocates sections to middle schools and high schools at a student-teacher ratio of 28 to 1." Mr. Lee confirmed that's still the number they were using earlier this week. And as you remember, last year, the plan was to increase it over three years, going from 28 to 29, and then 30, and then 31 to 1. How can it be now that we're at 20 to 1? We surely didn't eliminate eight 28ths of our teachers last year. That would be a 28% reduction in teachers, that didn't happen. More likely, that 20 to 1 ratio is counting educators that are not classroom teachers, like TOSAs, counselors, prep specialists, who else? Further, the solution last year was to cut 13 FTE, now we're looking at cutting 27 FTE. Or just over twice as many classroom teachers as last year. As I pointed out, this would be the equivalent of 135 sections at the secondary level, twice as many as were cut last year. For example, Santa Rosa High lost 17 sections last year. Are they going to lose 34 more sections this year? Now multiply that to the rest of our secondary schools. It's going to be horrible. I have to call shenanigans on the idea that massive reductions in teachers will have a negligible effect on class size. I'm glad here Mr. Lee was more realistic about it than I've heard before from some of our district leaders. How could a school lose 34 sections, or 17, or 10, or 5, without increasing class size averages? That doesn't make any sense to any of our 960 members. There may not be a 1 to 1 correspondence, but the overall class size averages will go up. They have to. We will also have fewer electives and fewer AP classes offered. What would you cut if you were a principal at one of these schools? If you're planning to vote tonight to cut 27 classroom teachers, thinking that the effect will be negligible, I'd beseech you to reconsider. If we're going to become a destination district for our students and staffs, we have to protect class size. And we have to provide the most academic choice as possible with robust electives and AP classes. Use a scalpel, not a hatchet, cut as few amount of teachers as possible. You have 1.1 million to spare, please use them. Thank you.
So, President Lyon, and I speak as one. He already said what I wanted to say, so. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we'll bring it back to the board. Dr. Carl.
Jason, would you address the issue of 28 to 1 for allocation of sections? These are the, the average of 20 to 1. Yeah, I'll do my best. When we allocate sections to sites, this is a secondary issue. Elementary is driven by the number of students in each grade level, and we follow those class size reductions in K3 and the contractual limits of 4 through 6. When we allocate sections, we look at total enrollment at each grade level, and look at staffing course sections at 28 to 1. We make some adjustments for PE courses for those grade levels at 9 and 10. We also look at adding additional enrollment for, to compensate for SDC students who often are in a self-made classroom, but staff differently, however, they still access electives and PE. And that's how we kind of get to our sections allocation. So allocating sections at 28 to 1 in those core levels is different than the actual looking at averages. Because there's other things that have been part of master schedule building for a long time. And some of that is really having adult-driven, and this is part of the discussion last year, where we actually identified courses themselves that have been historically under-enrolled, and looking at, are we creating master schedules that provide what students want to take and desire to be a part of? Or are we creating master schedules that are driven by the people that we employ? Both are valuable, so I don't want anyone to feel that that's not something that's important to me, because I'm in human resources, because I care about people, employees and students and parents alike. But we have to start looking at being fiscally responsible. The reality is, when I look at, this is the same information that I shared last year, and yes, we were looking at it at a different lens, and yes, perhaps we should have included, or I should have included, the information from School Services, because it was still pertinent information to get to the board to help them understand the global picture. But when we look, that's going to, I hope that doesn't blow up. When we look at this issue, we have to look at and understand what we're doing beyond just providing sections. We have to look at, what are those sections and how are they serving our students? I, as a principal, knew, and the middle school is simpler, as you make your way up from elementary school to middle, smaller kids, smaller problems, middle school, middle-sized kids, middle-sized issues, high school is a, you know, is a big beast, there's a lot to that. And there's a lot of things that each school offers that are important to that school. But there's also things that we've been offering that don't attract kids, but we've been staffing them. And that's some of the things that's causing some of these ratios. When I looked at every single master schedule currently as of Monday, and looked at class size averages, the middle school was at 27, and the high school was at 25. And I know people will say, that can't be right, because I have 165 kids in my class. But there are other people who don't. And that didn't include special ed students. And it also, when I went through that, looked at those courses, because some of the upper language courses and other courses have multiple sections in one. A course will have, you know, French, honors French 4, and then French 4 in the same course, each with, you know, single-digit students in those courses in some instances. So it is complicated, and we can't make decisions like we have to make as a district and you do as a board, and not realize that it will have an impact on the numbers in classrooms. But it's, again, we have to start looking at being fiscally responsible and actually creating master schedules that are meeting the needs of our students, things that they want to be taking, not the things that we just have to continue to offer. And I don't mean to seem sun callous, but those are the kind of decisions that we have to make. And depending on how the board votes tonight, district staff will work with those five principals to really help them figure out, what's, what is important to them? What's the priority of their school? What really is important to their community members and their kids? And when we looked at AP courses from the previous year that we made cuts last year, we looked at the number of AP offerings, the AP offerings this year were actually higher than last year. So obviously, those things are important to individual schools, and those things will continue to be important to individual schools. Yes, we need to offer a lot of electives, but we can't continue to do everything for everyone, because that's just not good business. And unfortunately, when we work in the environment of public schools, we are driven by a lack of dollars, we're smashed by poor budget cycles, we're harmed by the funding formulas in California, and we are now facing making the kind of decisions we have to make tonight. So I hope that probably was more than you wanted to hear, Dr. Carl, but I hope it answered your question. Thank you.
I just have a follow-up question that was brought up. Does a student, does the teacher-student ratio include TOSAs?
Thanks, you for the, you have my phone.
There you go.
Thanks. I'll keep a watch on him. Don't want to hear you.
Hi. But before, does the, the ratio of student to teacher, does that include TOSAs?
The actual scenario, School Services presented us with four different scenarios, and with the scenario that we shared, that resulted in 6.99 does not include TOSAs in the formula.
Does not include TOSAs?
Does not.
Other questions? You're on.
If I can get it, Mike.
Yeah. Well, that needs to stay over there.
Yeah, yeah.
Stay over there.
Thank you. I do have a, I do have a few comments to make, and this is, again, a topic I've spoken on several times during my tenure on this board over the last several years. And I can apologize to staff for all my late questions and kind of trying to catch up here in the last couple of weeks or so, and I appreciate, you know, really the effort and the good information that's come forward, and I appreciate, you know, that, you know, the grandeur of your, your task in front of you here. This is, this is a tough place to be in, not where any of us want to be. But again, I want to emphasize the importance of class size. And this is, over the course of my career, 30 years as a teacher, a member of the California Federation of Teachers of California, Teachers Association, doing work at the state level, you know, teaching a variety of courses in three subject areas, coaching. I've come to conclude, this is my conclusion, I will live with it until the day I can't live anymore, that class size really matters. It matters a whole bunch. And, you know, when you look at California, and you look at our funding, we all know that we're way underfunded. You know, we're at the bottom, we're very close to the bottom among the states regarding class sizes. And we are the state that has the most, the highest percentage of special needs kind of kids. And it's just not a good equation. States spend more on class size than we do. The first thing they do when they accrue more money is to reduce class sizes. If you have a chance to go into a classroom in New York, or Connecticut, or Massachusetts, you'll notice right off the bat, class sizes are about half the size that we have here in California. If you go to foreign countries, I've visited schools in Germany, and Netherlands, and Denmark, I have not been to Finland, but it's the same thing there, you'll notice that class sizes are very small, and there are always somebody in the classroom to help out. You know, so people know something. When the state gives us extra money, when they feel a little flush, categorically, we have spent money on class size reduction many times over the last few decades. So, we know that class size does matter. The thing is, for me, that, you know, we have deniers. You know, people will say, you know, I've got studies that show that class size doesn't matter. And I will tell you that I have a study that shows that eating junk food will make you president. But at the same time, at the same time, I think that we have to be careful, because we may not be an active denier, but the minute we start allowing more students in our classes, and I know we have limited capability controllers at the local level, but that, that line in the sand is very important, because it's a slippery slope. You know, there are other models of schools out there. My wife taught a, in her adult literacy class last year, she had a lady from China, and her, very, very bright woman. And her class consisted of six, high school, 60 students in a row, lecture format, and the top four got to go on. And she wasn't in the top four, but believe me, she is a very smart person. So there is a model that says, yeah, you can take more kids in a class, you can teach you can sit up there and do whatever you need to do, but ultimately, is that what we want to do here? And so for me, it's, it's very, very important. You know, I think that over the years, I You know, I think that over the years, I had a few small classes. They were AP classes. And I saw the trade-off because my academic classes ballooned up to 40. And, or they were close to that, at any extent, for several years. But, so I get what Jason's saying. I get what the principals have to go through. There's no question about it. We can do a better job of balancing. But at the same time, as Mr. Lyons said, you start adding a student, or a number here, you know, a ratio of 29 to 1, 30 to 1, you're not just talking about one student. You're talking about many students, more essays, more time, less contact with the student. And for me, the best analogy in terms of what an ideal education system is, is when I coached. And coaching for me was just kind of like what teaching should be about all day long. We had a track team, the last one that I coached was 65 members on the track team. We had three coaches. So it's about 20 students per coach. We had assistants that helped us. I could work with a student because they needed, or an athlete that needed to work on coming out of the blocks. I worked with sprinters and with the relay students. So I could work with one or two or three students, or athletes, at a time. Some of the athletes were doing strength training. Some of the athletes were doing, working on baton handoffs. But at any extent, I got to work with people one-on-one, two-on-one. And I got to direct people. I got to see the progress. There was something very, very special about that. And the people who've coached know that, you know, you live with those students or those children you had all through your life. There's something very special. I wish all teaching could be like that. So at any extent, I will stop here. You've been good listeners, I'm sorry to go on. But it is very important to me that we draw the line and make class size a priority. I know our budget's tight, and I do have a couple of questions about revenue. If there are no other questions, or I'd like to come back to that before we vote. But at the same time, I would like to see us put at the bottom of the cut list anything to do with the 27 teachers that we're talking about right now.
Other questions from the board?
I'm not sure if I read a good prime time on this. Maybe we don't. Thank you, Ron. As a classroom teacher, you absolutely know this. As a classroom teacher, I know this too. I don't know how many times when some kids are absent, maybe there was a flu or something, and maybe they're only 26 in the classroom versus 34. You just kind of get loaded. You say, "Oh, let's just keep it this way. This is so great." You know, even this little family, you have this little community, and you can really kind of have more touches with your kids. But I also know that when you're teaching 36, and teachers could do that too. Teachers are amazing and, okay, I'll stop there. I want to thank the BAC because the people who were on the BAC grappled and grappled and thought and thought so carefully about these. And I'm taking these suggestions as the BAC's consensus. I think they vetted it, and I think they really talked to people. I want to thank SRTA and district for working out a solution together for home and hospital. I think this is how it should be. Actually, I would have liked to see this happen before it kind of hit the fan. Maybe we would get so excited. But I think this sounds like a great solution. Class size is so complicated. Jason was trying to explain that to us, and I appreciate that explanation. It's still really hard to, it's really hard to understand. And we all just see, we all just see our slice of the pie when it gets to class sizes. If you're the one with full classes all the time, you're doing all those essays and really, that's what you see. But we also see, principals see, those classes where they're very small and they continue to be small. And that's all thrown into the class size mix. So when you've got 36, or 38, or 34, whatever it is, you know, that's what you see. You don't believe that someone's got 15. And it's not just one, it's several over a full high school. So the 28 and the 20, good try at explaining it. It's really complicated, but I hope people understand that. One of the questions I had last time was, how do we look at a pie chart? And what portion is out of people? And what portion is district? And I noticed that we have that slide, I think. Can we show that? I'll keep talking while it gets heard or doesn't get it. Anyway, it's about 72%, I think, is what people, people are. And that, I don't think that includes some of the certificated people at the district level, of which we are cutting several district people too, I believe. Okay, well, we just brought up those guys. And as it should be, and that's happening. And I know some position at least hasn't been filled at the district level, so I appreciate that cut also. But finally, when we're talking about squeezing this at the class size level, and I'm going to keep saying this as long as I'm up here, there are systems that we are working under together that create these problems. And it's not just, it's a funding issue for the state, for sure, but it's not just that. It's also how we squeeze everybody into a school year or into a school day or a school week. And we have these systems that are really 120 years old. And so we're still trying to do that based on different needs today, different economic needs, different workplace, career, college needs, different family needs, different economic system. So it's kind of like doing not just apples and oranges. It's doing like, what, apples and pickles or something like that. And we will continue to have these, we will continue, continue to have these discussions where we're just, it feels like we're pitted against each other. And we shouldn't be. I love that home and hospital thing that got worked out. I love that, and we should have it more and more and more. So I want us to keep thinking of, board, talking to you, talking to us, Diane, how we change systems so we don't have these kinds of structural systems that force us into, "Oh, you need to have 36 kids in your class now, or you're going to have one more kid in your class." Because we just need to do it differently for the 21st century and for the needs today when we have this, okay. You'll hear me say that again.
Okay.
If nobody else wants to speak, I just have a couple more things to say.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry to do this again. I just want to come back to the question of revenue. I truly, I truly do appreciate the advisory committee's work. And there's no way I would go in there with a scalpel or tweezers or anything to try and fit anything out. I just, for me, the question is a priority of not cutting teacher sections. But I have a question about the revenues. Because this is a side of the equation, and I think that we can explore a little bit. Now, I know that we've got a bill in the hopper, and we've got some chickens you can count. But it sure sounds likely that we would be able, we're going to get that money. Does that sound correct?
If the bill passes.
If the bill passes. Okay, I don't see how that wouldn't pass, but it could, that's possible. Do we have enough revenue coming in from that bill to retain those 27 positions?
Did you go to it?
The money that will come from the bill is only ADA that covers any losses we sustain. So it's never going to be more. There's not going to be additional money. And it is even in a, it's in a tiered system. So in one year, if it passes, the first year will cover 100% of losses from lost students due to fire. And the second year would cover 75% of losses due to lost students.
Right, because that's plenty of money. First year would be, what, $2.3 or $4 million?
But it's money that we had lost. So it's never bringing us above wherever we were at. It's only if we lose money. So for example, if we don't lose any money, we will not get any money. So it's only bringing us back to where we were.
But we have, we'll have 300 fewer students, so we'll have fewer sections.
Well, unless, if they are completely 100% evenly distributed and 300 across the entire district, probably we'll not have that effect.
Okay.
All it gets.
Okay, and then... There was a little discrepancy. The auditor said that we have 8% reserve at this time. Is that correct? So I'm not sure, that's a few percent, that's a couple of million bucks.
Yeah, I had the same question.
Yeah, I can address both of these. We have an 8% reserve at the end of prior fiscal year 2016, '17. In '17, '18, we have a budget that is deficit spending. And then in '18, '19, we have a budget that's deficit spending. So that reserve will be consumed by those two years. And then if we incorporate the fiscal stabilization plan at a level of 6.2 million, and then in '18, and then the following year, 6.8 billion, then we'll be meeting on 3% minimum reserve. That's our, that's our budget projection.
Okay, so that 8% that was mentioned is already been drawn down.
It's already, it's already been drawn down in our budget. And then the other comment is, so the bill now that's on the floor for ADA, in current year '17, it would fund at 100%. And that is the revenues that we would have budgeted drawing down to get back to where we're budgeted. In '18, '19, it would be at a 75% rate, and in '19, '20, we'd be at a 50% rate.
So that's the gap, that's 75% now.
We'll only get 75%.
Right. So it would be, it would be, directly it would give us revenue, but it would be to get back to our current budget and to have it fulfill us, it would be, that would be a stretch.
All right, we have one-time money, the $4 million, and School Services, I know, recommends that we go ahead and spend, not spend that money on ongoing programs, but we could if we wanted. Is that correct? So why not spend that money on retaining teachers for the next year?
Because it reduces the structural deficit. I need us to remember that our deficit is structural, which means it is ongoing. So this would only prolong that structural deficit for future years. Maybe Assistant Superintendent Bell says, "Take the cannon down the road." So one time of only, only take care of this year, but that structural deficit will still be there in the following years going down.
You want to say if we wanted to ask for this to be cared for that? Is that right?
You're correct. If you had to spend one-time funding for ongoing expenditures, it would not help our structural deficit, and it would only increase it as we go down in the next year. So what we would wind up doing is spending the one-time funds and then having to make a more reduction as we go forward. Also, so that would not be a very prudent idea going forward, just spending funding on ongoing expenditures that we know would cost us, and we would have to make another reduction going forward once that funding is used.
I've got one last question, and I'm sorry. Well, maybe I'm thinking, this is a follow-up, sorry.
Wait, wait, wait.
So maybe you could give us an example of what that might look like? What would be a better use of funds? So that we can have, maybe, you know, paint a picture, that scenario, what is a better use, a prudent use of that type?
The one-time?
Yes.
The one-time funding? What, one of the recommendations I would make to the board is that we right now hold a 3% reserve. A 3% reserve is about nine days of payroll. That's a little scary if anything should happen. I would say that it's a possibility with the board, again, you asked the question.
Yes, yes.
That's the thought, is that we increase our reserve to maybe 4% or 5% by using the one-time fund. That's one area. It's not the only, but it is one idea that I have. Because again, the fiscal structure that we have right now, it is, it's nerve-wracking to know that we have a lot, over 1,600 employees that we want to continue to maintain their paychecks, maintain their benefits, maintain the things we maintain. But if a 3% reserve only equates to nine days of payroll, should something happen, should cash flow become a problem? That's a little nerve-wracking to me. So that would be one idea that I would pose. Actually, we're going to pose it back to the BAC and have them toss it around about the one-time money, not just about increasing the reserve, but any other ideas we have around those $4 million that were expected to be seen.
Anybody else?
I just had a question.
That's okay.
Andrea, this question's for you. The state of California has seen a real uptick in income, from personal income taxes in particular. It bodes very well for the next quarter. Do we anticipate a large increase coming to the schools?
I think it's one thing that you have to look at, and LAO and the state is looking at, is that there hasn't been a recession recently in the state of California. Now, we've been on a continuous climb, but at some particular point in the next 18 months, year, two years, there will be a recession in the state of California. What that would have an effect on the school district is, if we don't get our financial house in order now and then we get into another middle of a recession, that is going to make it a more difficult task for us going forward. And any economist that you see, that's the forecast that they have for the future. It's not steady climbing, it's on a plateau, and then at some point, it's going to dip. And that dip is coming sometime in the near future.
Okay, so your recommendation would be if we do get additional funds to boost the reserve?
My, that would be very prudent of the district to do that, yes, sir.
Okay. And my last, I do have one, sorry. LA, yeah, LA district is now raising both its contribution supplement and reduce class sizes. Is that a thing we could do here in San Diego?
You have to demonstrate that you are doing services above and beyond what you're normally doing in order to reduce class size using supplemental concentration funds. And they will be looking positive at that in terms of our metrics to do that. Also, LAO's, you have school what?
Legislative Analyst, Analyst Office.
Legislative Analyst Office. So we just should have, look at, Ron, you have a question? Are you sure?
I also want to let you know, we attended a Title I seminar last week in Sacramento. And there's also some new legislation from the federal government that may be loosening up regulations which may allow us to use Title I funds for just the same thing, to lower class size or other things a school district or the school site want to do. So there may be maybe another way to target certain areas, to our Title I schools.
Understand that we have a lot of our $1.1 million and supplemental dollars already tied up in staffing. So we could reduce class sizes with either of those monies, given the right circumstances and the right services with metrics. But then we're going to be making choices about which staffing to keep and not keep, if we're going to use that staffing for that. So I want to make that point, and I want people to understand that.
Dr. Paul? So I want to...
I turned it off, I'm sorry.
I want to speak to the consultants. I've heard quite a bit from various people about consultants and contracts. And I see that we reduced those by 35% last year and another 35% this year. I commend that because I also hear from staff that they are willing, ready, and able, and they already are working together to collaborate, to create powerful partnerships in classrooms and disciplines. So commendation all around to staff and at all levels.
And we saw that at this last professional development. We have a report coming up at the next meeting where more staff was leading workshop, so to speak. And we have a great participation too in terms of overall, over 86% I believe attended. So that stuff off. And upcoming, we're going to be doing more of it. More of our staff are ready and willing to lead professional development, and that's exactly the direction we want to go. So I appreciate President Lyons' desire for us to become a destination district, both for teachers and for students. I think to do that, we first and foremost need to be fiscally sound. I think people need to feel confident that they are coming to a district that is...
We have a lead.
That is in good financial condition. And right now, we still have qualified status. And so at the very least, we need to be certified by the county. It's having a positive status. We do have a reserve that has historically teetered right on the legal minimum. And in the county, the average is between 8% and 9%. Whereas we're at right at 3%. in the county, the average is between 8% and 9%, whereas we're at right at 3%. And so, it is a little precarious. I know that all the budget workshops that I've gone to at CSBA, in that part of my training, they always advise against spending one-time money on ongoing expenses, but instead, making sure that there are reserves to deal with unexpected issues, and we, of course, have been experiencing some unexpected issues. The bill, if it passes, I think that we have to remember that it still will not cover 100% of our losses. Most of the districts that have experienced these catastrophic wildfires have taken at least three years to come back to their normal enrollment. I know that the district in San Diego has never returned, and so I think that this is a time to be really careful. On the other hand, I 100% agree with Director Kristoff about class size. Class size matters, and I've been a coach too, only I didn't have 1 to 20, I had 1 to 70, except for when we went to nationals, and then I had 1 to 12, and it was amazing. And I certainly understand that class size matters, and I think we all agree that class size matters, and are really committed to keeping that down. And that's why, you know, staff is really going to be charged to figuring out how to balance our staffing ratio by identifying historically under-enrolled classes, and making sure that that's where we get our savings. Both to save money and be fiscally sound, as well as to make sure that we're offering classes that our students want to clock to, because they're great classes. So, I think I really applaud the district for working out a solution with the home and hospital program. Again, I echo the Director Fong's comments about that, and working with SRTA on that, I appreciate that. And as well as keeping our restorative specialists engaged through the whole year, so that we can keep them, I think that's a great solution. But I, for one, would say that I think that this is a time where we have to be really careful and really conservative, and be careful in how we implement cuts, but be careful about our future financially. So I would endorse the staff's recommendations. Is there anybody who would want to take anything off of this, the recommended cuts? Well, this is an action item tonight? Actually, it's all on... All the genetics, it says D1. You're right, we don't have to go to... So we'll go to D2, the action items. And now this is an action item. Let's give Frank a...
I'd like to move.
Give it a second.
I'd like...
Get a good tone here, Frank. It's going to be dead.
I'd like to move this item forward, I appreciate what we've... I'm going to get to that. I move the item.
I second.
You'll second. I believe that the process was excellent, although the topic was poor, because we don't like to cut anything in our budget, because we all know how important it is and what hole we have. But this is the most responsible thing to do at this time, in my opinion, and I support the superintendent and her work, and also the budget dividing. I thought the work that was done there was stellar, they incorporated all the players to be able to be involved, so I'm okay.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Director Q, seconded by Director Carl. We have a roll call, but please, Ron.
Director Q?
Aye.
Director Carl?
Aye.
Director Kristoff?
Aye.
Director Fong?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Director Shatell?
Aye.
President Close?
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, everybody, for your hard work on this really difficult issue. Now, adjourned.